Looks very nice.
My wife thinks so, too.
Looks very nice. Okay, I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board, October 11th, 2017, meeting in Memorial Town Hall, third floor conference room. It's a little bit after seven o'clock. We have minutes, vouchers, correspondence, one public hearing on Bailey Lane, and then an A&R plan, one to Heather Road, and that's what we have on the agenda. So with that said, beginning with minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 27, 2017. As ready?
Second. Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of September 27, 2017. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not voting.
And one abstain.
Not there. Yes, sir.
Moving on to vouchers, there are three, four motions.
I want to approve the payment in the amount of $2,265 for professional services rendered by, for the Bailey Lane OSRD subdivision to H.L. Graham and Associates.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the H.L. Graham invoice in the amount of $2,265, zero cents. Any discussion?
Just a perpetual comment that Larry's invoices leave a lot to be desired.
John?
Yeah.
Wouldst thou make a reminder note?
He should be here tonight, too.
Yeah, he'll be here tonight. So seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four yes, one abstain, or are you voting on that?
I can vote on that, I'm a member, I'm a standing citizen here.
God, darn it.
By crackey. Moving on to North of Boston.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to pay the voucher for the second of the two recreational marijuana moratorium, legal ads, in the amount of $757.50.
Second.
Way to go. Motion has been made and it has been clearly seconded for North of Boston Media Group in the amount of $757.50. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one more.
I move to approve payment in amount of $108.65 for the office supplies listed on the attached invoice dated August 23rd, 2017.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the staple office supply invoice of $108.65. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Anything we need to sign?
We do, we have these here. As the, as the vouchers are going around for signatures, under correspondence, there's correspondence from Town of Rowley Planning Board, it's an FYI, I don't think there's any discussion on that. And after we get these signed, we'll move into the public hearing for Bailey Lane. John, in my packet, there was a September 21, 2017, letter from Larry Graham, and I'm assuming it was just included in the packet under correspondence, but it wasn't. Wasn't necessary.
Right, right, it was just past reference.
Okay.
Did everybody get a copy?
Because it wasn't, it wasn't listed in correspondence, so I didn't know if it was supposed to be in or not.
Right, it was just an attachment for historical purposes. Did everybody get a copy of the email that I sent out regarding Larry's most recent review?
No. Are they forwarding, are you mailing it just to Georgetown.org?
I actually only got it in my huff on not the Georgetown.org.
I want to do what he's doing. Whatever you're doing, I want to do that.
Yeah.
Does anybody want a hard copy of that for tonight?
I just gave him one for...
If you have another hard copy, I only have my electronic.
Can I borrow that hard copy? Downstairs, Larry's not here.
Well, we could, if Larry's not here, we could move on to the A&R, because I think it's just looking for withdrawal without prejudice, according to the...
And then it looks like there's a...
Looks like there's more than that.
It's a definitive subdivision withdrawal, and followed by an A&R submittal.
Thank you. I'm going to hold on to this one more, because there's one more going there, okay? Maybe I misread the agenda.
If I may.
Yeah, Harry.
I believe it's a clean A&R submittal, but just for paperwork purposes, I believe we'll need to motionally allow the applicant to withdraw from the existing definitive subdivision.
Right, yeah, yeah, that was, that was the, in, in...
So the suggestion to be withdrawal.
The suggested action.
I didn't read the last page. Here's Larry.
Larry.
I'm not sure, but I think, how's the board feel? I think we should, I'm of the opinion we should stop going out to make copies during meetings. Either we take a recess, or we don't. It's just, it's just an odd break. If there was a second person to do it, yeah.
Good, is this one scapable? I didn't have a staple.
I think, so that's October 10th?
Yeah.
I've got mine. Okay, so with that, we will go to the public hearing for Bailey Lane. Need a motion to, gentlemen want to come forward and...
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Motion to open the continuation of the Bailey Lane OSRD.
Second. Motion has been made and it has been seconded to open the continued public hearing of Bailey Lane. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So that is unanimous, and what we'll do is, we'll go first to the applicant. It's been a while since we've all been together, and the applicant, first we'll go to John for an overview, then we'll go to the applicant.
If I may ask, when we, do we have the record when the last time was? I wanted to make sure I was at that.
I think it's 8/7.
Okay, fine. Okay. I missed the last two, and three.
It's somewhere in John's, I don't know if they do re-hear this, application tracking.
Yep.
So, initial public hearing, May 24th, second public hearing, held and continued, third public hearing, scheduled hearing continued, hearing scheduled for October 11th. So, the last meeting we had together face to face was May 24th, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you're, you're good to go?
Solid, we've missed you.
Okay, so, with that, and then, then what we'll do is, we'll go to the public for comments, and John, if you could sort of summarize Larry's information, and then we'll have Larry here to answer questions and whatnot for moving this forward, but if you just wanted to introduce where we are right now, and if you want to have Larry present his own stuff, that's mine.
Yeah, I just want to, as I stated in the staff report, initially, we were going to have our next review meeting to consist of going over the previously revised plans. Those previously revised plans have since been reviewed and peer reviewed by Larry, and we received his peer review email-wise over the weekend, and we invited him here this evening to help us go through the actual new review of this plan. I'm not going to say final review, but we may work towards that this evening. The applicant's here with the second revision since the last time this board reviewed the plans. Larry, if you want to go over item by item of your peer review, or...
I think that, I think it's probably most appropriate, let the applicant have his say first, and then I'll go back to it.
Okay, so let's do that. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, Peter Blaisdale, from Williams, this is Rich Williams in Jeffroda. So, you know, since the last time we were here with you, most of the big responses were sent back on a September 7th letter, sent back to the board. Larry and I, Mr. Graham, Larry and I sat down at his office on August 22nd, and, you know, he brought up a lot of good points, and he found some things that were some discrepancies and some typos, and he said, you know, if you fix this, and this, and this, and we said, sure. Asked for some clarification on a few things, like some notes as to how we were going to construct the driveway aprons on houses, you know, 33 and 35 Bailey Lane, so we clarified that, we clarified some of the details that showed how the road was going to be widened and where it was going to be, that was a little deficient. He asked us if we could take a look at increasing the size of the culvert that takes the runoff from the backs of these houses and then comes down here, just to make sure that we don't have any ponding effect on the, on the next door neighbor at 35 Bailey, which we do.
Peter, could you turn that board to the recording board? Because then what will happen also is the camera will pick it up and it'll be better for the group that looks at the TV back there, thank you.
Sure. So, you know, nothing, nothing really earth shattering, asked to just provide a little bit of clarification, there's a couple of questions in here that I know he's, he's put in his last letter that maybe the board wants to take up as far as the status of the road, that type of thing, I won't, I won't get into that. There's some other questions, it was not the fire department and the highway department have been, you know, approved of these plans, we did have a letter from Chief Mitchell in May, to my knowledge, all these plans, maybe John can chime in, I think, I believe all these plans have been given to all the different departments with, with an opportunity to comment.
The fire department was final quite a while ago.
Yeah.
With, that had to do with the turnaround of Bartlett and the intersection area of Mohawk, that little T.
Right, as well as the width of the, of the pavement on, on the court.
Yeah.
Right.
And this week, I asked Peter Durkey if he had any further comments regarding the plans, and there, there is an issue concerning the existing drainage capacity at Bailey and Taylor, and Larry is going to address that a little bit further.
Sure.
In talking with Larry in preparation for this meeting.
Sure, we can save that for last.
You know, there was another issue that Larry raised, you know, was, was there going
to be any type of a sign at the trailhead for the open space? I believe the answer was no, nobody wanted that. I believe there was a question about whether there were going to be streetlights on on Bailey Court and on Bartlett Court, I think the answer to that was no. You know, again, a lot of the, a lot of the other comments were just some very small, you know, typos, you know, just change the eight feet, eight foot, you know, little things. And again, I'm not trying to make excuses, some of it was just left over from the prior engineers, I just, I didn't see before, that type of thing. He asked us to provide roof recharge designs for the, for the roof systems. Previously, they had just been shown as squares, with just, you know, to be designed later, so Larry just asked if, if we could go forward and just give them information on that, which we did. There was a couple of questions about, previously, we had this culvert going underneath Bartlett Court that were discharged over here and going around, but we eliminated that, so that got rid of one of Mr. Graham's comments. He asked us if it was possible to expand this stormwater basin a little further towards the southeast, and we said we would look at that when we went out in the field, if we find more, you know, permeable material, we'll try to move it a little bit more away from the neighbors, but for now, that's okay, it might just be a field change that he'd be okay with. Couple other, just label a couple of other drainage structures on some of the lots, and like I said, just some details, a little more finer detail on some of the cross-sections of the road, because it, you know, the road tips one way and tips another way in a couple different spots. Kate caught berm, we had, we had shown it in one spot, but when we tapered the road in, it just needed to be brought in. Couple of details about the rip rap and how, the sizing and how we want that to be constructed as they come out of the, the earth berms. And I think that was it, as far as Larry's September 7th comments. And I won't put words on Larry's mouth, I think we responded to everything up through the September 7th letter, and then, as Mr. Cashell said, we just got to maybe talk a little bit more about the culvert that's going on in Taylor Street that's given us a couple of starts.
Larry, before going, do you want to go to the public?
Okay.
What they may want to put on the table. So, at this point, if there's anyone from the public who had any questions or wanted to say anything about this project, please identify yourself for the record and have at it.
I'm Terry Oldash, 33 Bailey. When are you starting this?
Within 30 days after approval.
Okay. And how, why will the court be?
Peter?
The pavement is going to be 14...
It's 14 feet of pavement with three feet of gravel on each side.
Okay. Are you taking down all of the trees that are between the Natalias and the Oldash house? Everything that's there for forest, are you taking everything down?
Can you point to...
Most everything is going to go, yes.
Can you point to where that is on the drawings, please?
That's the location of the court.
It's houses on either side of the court.
Okay.
Existing houses.
So you are taking everything down? And what do you plan to plant afterwards to block the road from my house?
We've got vegetation that's proposed on both sides of, on both sides of the road.
How tall will those trees be?
James Manuel Landscape Architect, we've got a mix of primarily...
So, hey, James, could you introduce yourself again, please?
Okay, that's our Jamesy Manuel Landscape Architect. We've got, we're planning to, the primary screening is going to be a green giant arborvitae, which is a tall evergreen. We've specified sizes, actually, in seven to eight foot range to start, they get up to 20 feet tall, majority even beyond that, so it should form a pretty dense screen. In addition to that, we have other shrubs and plantings. Every shrub besides the green giant arborvitae is a native shrub that we're proposing. It will complement those plantings, but those are the ones that kind of do the heavy lifting for the screening.
Is that, I didn't see that drawing in the set that we have. Did I miss it?
No, it was included.
I didn't, I didn't see one either.
I didn't either.
It's not a landscape plan anyway.
So, this is new information, what we're hearing then, which I'm glad you've got it addressed, but we haven't seen that information, I guess it hasn't been submitted.
And I couldn't hear you too well. Did you say the trees will grow to 20 feet, or you're going to plant them 20 feet?
Will grow to 20 feet plus.
And what do you, how, how high are they going to be when you plant?
They're going to be seven to eight feet.
Seven to eight.
Upon installation.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else at this point?
Jim Thalerhill, five Mohawk Circle. It's been a while since we've seen the plans. If someone could point out possibly where the new trail or the trailhead is on the plan.
It's, it hasn't changed, it's the same, same location as we've, as we've had it all along, out here, and, and that hasn't changed since, since we submitted the definitive plan.
And it'll route around, there's a new kind of green area, right?
Yep, zone here.
And that'll connect with the existing trails?
Correct, same, same connection points.
Yeah, okay. So, just two other questions, we've, we've asked for one of the meetings in the past, just, I know there's going to, I think there's still a need for retaining wall on the court, because it is cutting into the side of the hill.
They do show retaining walls for that entry drive to the court? Is, are those what you're referring to?
Right, so the question is, what are the retaining walls and what it's going to look like?
The plans...
They're, they'll be block retaining walls.
Just FYI, right now, the note on the drawing says unit block walls, and it's a pretty wide open, we're going to tighten that up to make sure that it's a residential scaled detail that's appropriate.
And then, not having seen or anything on the planting plans, one thing that pops out of my mind that, from what I've heard, is arborvitae's, and I don't know if that's the setting out of the woods like that, that just might stick out as kind of a sore thumb. I know it's a, it's a, it's a very hardy shrub, it grows fast, it grows thick, it kind of does everything we want, but it just might look out of place. I don't know if there's any other alternatives for a primary screening material.
I think, I think it's a, I think it's a good question, and I think, you know, we're going to need to see the plan to, to, I think, talk a little bit more specifically about that.
And I think, just as a comment, of course, screening, I think it's important for the Oldashers and Natalias as well, too, but I think it should be fitting to the setting as well.
Yeah, there certainly, I, I know that the landscape architect could, you know, come up with some native evergreen trees that, that would, some native evergreen understory planting could also do the trick, I'm sure. Any, anyone else?
Just, just to, to talk about the scale of this wall, it's, it's not a very tall wall, it's, it's a couple of feet on this side and, and I think kind of four feet on the other side, so it's not, it's not like it's way out of the ground, so...
That's good.
It's not going to take a lot to screen that.
Okay, all right.
Does it make sense, if you do not have the landscape plan that I'm pretty certain we submitted, that we have James present it?
He certainly can present it, yeah, for sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it, I think it would, it wouldn't hurt, and so if he wants to present that, that's fine. I don't, I can't speak to whether it was...
I can't either, I'm shocked that it's not submitted. James?
I can go over with you guys what was submitted.
Yeah, no, I'm not throwing you under the bus, John. I'm shocked that it's not submitted, if it wasn't.
It was plan sheets four through nine.
And that's what Larry's letter also said.
That's what this is.
And the reason for that, those are the plan sheets that actually had revisions to the previous plans.
Correct.
So you replace the old four through nine.
Rich just said, it was brought to a meeting where we were not allowed to submit any information, so fell through the cracks from all the meetings that didn't happen. That's what happened.
That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so...
The way it's been.
Yeah.
No one's fault, all of the board.
Okay, I'll, I'll present what we have here, and I have to submit, but we're proposing this private court, trees, we're proposing an entrance at the street gate along the street line are red oaks, native species to the area, these will be out in the corner at the entrance. As we come in, we're going to be planting birch on one side, dogwood on the other side. So it's not, I kind of oversimplified it before by saying it's all arborvitae, I don't want to give the impression it's just one type of shrub. The arborvitae's, the evergreens, are going to do a lot of the year-round screening, but these trees certainly fill the voids that would be left when the clearing is done. As we continue down, these are the green giant arborvitae, that's a variety that I selected, particularly because it's dense, fast growing, it's known to be deer resistant as well, too, as the only arborvitae type that is deer resistant. And then interspersed with that would be a white spruce, continuing with the arborvitae, some more birches, and then white spruce arborvitae mixture, so it's a white spruce arborvitae is the evergreen component, birches, dogwoods, and oaks are the trees that canopy and deciduous trees that we're proposing. A couple of dogwoods down at the end here for these units, and the tree line, as you can see on the plane, is the limit of clearing, but the native vegetation, the existing vegetation will remain. The path is shown here, to remain in any area that are disturbed, native detention area would be seeded with a conservation seed mix, not, not turf grass, but a, but a seed mix, a conservation mix that would only need a periodic attempting to...
Could you by any chance, is it, is it a single row, basically, of planting?
We really don't have much room for more, it's sort of a staggered row, but essentially is a single row of planting, there wasn't a lot of room for double tiers of plantings, just because of the way the space constraints...
This is kind of, this is one of those items that I'm sure is just another, you know, it's fallen through the cracks with all of the delays, but at, at some point, I know I had mentioned to try to hook up with those butters and, and come up with a planting plan that works for them, and oftentimes, what is really successful is to not plant just on your strip, but if the butter is open to it, where you plant some trees on their property also, and so you get more of a, you know, you get more of a woods versus a line, and, but that takes a discussion with the, with the butter, and usually, they're very open to having a plant given to them, kind of thing. So, you know, that's something that I think you, you might want to talk with the butters about, but, okay. Can you talk a little bit about the detail and how it responds to the perking and/or lack thereof?
Which do I...
Your planting details?
Well, I think, once we get to the level here, I think we're, we're above the gray lines here, there's a, that it's not going to, it's not going to really be affected, we're beyond, we're beyond the position of swales or walls or something, where we're not affected by any type of water flow or storm drainage implications based on planting.
I guess, I guess what I mean is, the soils underneath, what, what are those soils underneath these plantings?
Well, we just have native soils, such as the standard planting detail, where we're going to have soil, native soil underneath, and the planting bed would have a plant head, you know, planting head mixture.
So I guess, the native soils, do they perk well? Are they, are they highly porous, or are they clay?
They're, it's glacial till, so perk rates are...
It's glacial till?
Yeah, they're, you know, it's good material for, yeah.
That's all, just wanted, that's what I was trying to get at, is not creating bathtubs. Anything else?
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. And there was nothing else from the public at this point? Okay, so Larry, do you want to?
Sure.
Your letter and...
Yeah, Larry Graham, H.L. Graham Associates and Technical Review Agent for the board. I have a letter, which I think has been distributed to each member now, yesterday's date, which brings us up to the present time with respect to our review of the development, and I think that Peter Blaisdale accurately described from his perspective up to this point where we're at, as well as the meeting that I had with him back in, I think, August 18th. I also had a conversation Monday or Friday with Rich and Peter with regards to what my letter was going to say, and I realized they just saw it yesterday, but I did tell them what, what was going to be in that letter. This is our fourth report on the project application. It's actually our third in 2017, we had one way back in 2015, so it's actually our third report this year, and in the second report, which was dated August 22nd, after Peter and I met... And in the second report, which was taken August 22nd, after Peter and I met, I brought up my concerns after another site visit with respect to the drainage at the intersection of Bailey Lane and Taylor Road. And that's the second part of the October 10th letter, which I'll get into. The first part of that October 10th letter is a repeat of something that I've had in the previous letters, which are five items that I wanted to be sure that the board had made decisions on because they're related to planning board decisions. And I had not been to all your meetings. They may or may not have been addressed. So I did repeat those. Jumping into the second part of that letter, my concern with respect to the drainage, which...
Just for clarity, so the first part of your letter is capital letter A?
Yes.
And there are five items under that?
Yes.
And your second part of the letter is capital B?
Yes.
And then you have one, two, three after that?
Right, right. So we're looking at that second part B now, which I started talking about back in August. And between August 22nd and September 7th, which was the response letter from Williamson Sporadus, they did some investigation of the existing drainage at the subject intersection. And they outlined what they discovered in their letter on page two. And they also modified their latest revised plans and showed on those latest revised plans some of the results of their investigations of the drainage at that intersection.
Is that, when you say latest revised plans, you mean the September 7th set?
Yeah, that would be correct, revision number three. So, under B of my October 10th letter, there are three points that I make. And I'll take them kind of in reverse order. Number three first, the plans, September 7th, most recent plans, don't give enough information on the first 125 feet or so to the westerly side of Bailey Lane as it leaves Taylor. And I asked them to provide additional detail there such that the, we could see how the gutter flow south to north along the westerly gutter line would be contained and directed to the open end culvert that goes across the intersection.
Could the applicant help right now? And when Larry talks about that area, could you show us areas that he talks about?
I got a picture.
It would help all of us, I think, just to...
You want a pointer, Rich, or?
Thanks.
I got one if you want one.
No, I'm gonna use my scale here, handy scale.
So basically the area you were talking about was...
Right, so this is the intersection with Taylor and Bailey, right here. There's a culvert, culvert end that is on the west side of the road. And the runoff from this, from this section of pavement will end up in that culvert.
So what I was asking them to do is to provide enough detail to show that it, in fact, will end up at the end of that culvert because their existing and proposed grades are not detailed enough to make that assurance.
Okay.
That's number three.
Can I, can we just respond to that just quickly, just so the board knows what we can, we can provide?
I get, Rich, here's what I would say. If you can do it...
I can do it very quickly.
Then I would just say, just say, "We can do it" and let's move on. We don't need, we don't need to know.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it, but I'm just, because we can go through each one of these this way. And if you can do it, just say, "We've got it covered."
I think it's called road profile.
It's a ditch.
Okay, we can do it.
It'll just, I think it'll help.
Number two, moving up, you know, bottom to top. They investigated Catch Basin Two, which is the one at the closest the intersection. You want to just point to these things that are right in that area. And they found that a pipe, the pipe coming into that Catch Basin, they labeled as crushed, a 10-inch pipe. We don't know for sure where that pipe comes from, whether it comes from Catch Basin One, which is further up the street, which is being depended upon to take some of the drainage off the intersection. We don't know that. We don't know, we really don't know anything about the underground, the subsurface condition of the drainage at that intersection. But my point is, if it is part of the drainage which allows that intersection to function and it's crushed, in my judgment, I ask that the applicant take responsibility for that, open it up and fix it to the point where its integrity is intact, further upgrading. Do you want to point where that is, Rich? It's right in the intersection without...
Is that another one of those, "We can do it"?
Um, not necessarily.
Okay, let's talk about that a little bit, just...
That's that guy there, I believe, we're talking about.
Yeah.
We are gonna be reconstructing that and we could open it up and while we're doing it, take that little piece of pipe and replace it if that's the only issue. But I think we should, I think we should put this off and go to the first one. And then we'll go back to it.
We'll go to number one, but before we do, your revised plans also indicated a possible DMH paved over. And I didn't ask you guys about that when I spoke to you. Is that something you rang and are, just because pipes are headed in that direction?
Just because pipes are headed in that direction and there's nothing to the surface.
They did get a tone on a metal detector on the pavement, but...
You're not sure.
You know, it could be. I don't know. We just, we thought perhaps.
Did you have something quick?
Fairly quick, just some observations from living in the neighborhood at that intersection.
About that pipe?
Yeah, it's helpful.
Yeah.
So there's two catch basins. There's one right on Taylor. And it's kind of obvious, you know, just kind of standing there. But as you go south on Bailey, on the left, just past the Taylor intersection, there is a catch basin there. I think that's the one that was crushed. It sank about a good foot. You can't even see it anymore, but it is down there. And during heavy rains, that's kind of a mess on that intersection. That crushed catch basin was never fixed. Adding to that, especially in the springtime, but several times during the year on heavy rainfalls, there's a vernal pool, I believe it's a vernal pool on Mohawk that overflows and comes out onto Bailey, right at that spot, between the house that's on the corner of Taylor and the first house on the left going up Bailey Lane.
Backyard.
And, yeah, so it goes between the two, between the back of the Taylor Lane house and the side of the Bailey Lane house. It just kind of overflows onto Bailey Lane and kind of goes in that area.
Okay. How long's that been crushed?
Who knows?
Three years, four years?
So it's an existing condition of town property?
It's been awhile.
Okay.
But what happens?
We won't resolve it.
No, it doesn't sound like it.
I think the one that the gentleman's talking about that's sunken is the Catch Basin One between number one and number 36.
There's a twin tree right next to where it is.
Yeah. I mean, it's down probably six to 12 inches. And the house on the corner is pumping there, some pump, drain rules. That's the way you're talking.
During heavy storms, water will come up through that. It's not catching anything.
Well, that could be the one that is connected to Catch Basin One, which was my point, which I say this is likely the pipe carrying storm water from Catch Basin One, about 100 feet up Bailey Lane, so.
Okay, so this right now is an outstanding, it's gonna be a question mark, okay?
It could be the overflow where the crushed pipe is from that, from that one.
I think it's a connecting pipe.
Yeah, and I think eventually it was at one time going right to the pond. It's, that's how it was, a safety net. And that's what I think. But adding to it is an issue, I would think, that we'd have to...
We're not adding, we're not adding to it. That's the information you've not heard.
We should go to the, we should get, go to the first.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's go to the first one.
I agree.
Yeah. And I'm gonna read that one. As Williamson Sporadus could only go so far with their investigation, recommend the planning board request that the highway department work with them and ourselves to further investigate the location size, type and condition of the outfalls of the pipes from structures at the subject intersection. This work could lead to the need for a drainage easement or easements over private lands, northeasterly of the intersection or northerly, which only the town can acquire. These investigations may require the use of a camera. So I think that's the only way we're going to understand whether or not the drainage in that intersection is working. Now, you're gonna hear from Peter and Rich and Jeff that they're not adding drainage to this intersection. So they should be excused from this, any of this work, I think, or some of it, I guess they'll say. But, and I don't dispute their drainage calculations. I've had my guy in the office working with Peter over the course of the last couple of weeks going back and forth. And we're not disputing their drainage calculations that say that they are reducing the drainage to that intersection by theory, theoretical engineering calculations. I feel differently and I feel that there is a chance that those calculations could be off a bit. They're within 7%, five to 7%. And I'm not comfortable in recommending the board move forward with approval of this plan in the improvement of Bailey Lane as proposed with an unknown drainage outfall or outfalls from that intersection. So that's why I'm making the recommendations that I did, number one.
So when you say work with the highway department?
Yeah.
What do you mean by work with the highway department?
Well, the highway department apparently has no, as Bill, no information on the drainage on the intersection. But they do have the equipment that could perhaps open up where they think a drain manhole might be, open that up. The applicant camera these lines and see where they go. Maybe they're gonna go to an outfall and everything's gonna be rosy. I'm wondering if this drainage, instead of going directly north or across that intersection in the crotch of the intersection, maybe the drain runs down Bailey toward 133. Or 97, whatever it is over there.
97.
97. Because a little bit further to the north on the right is a strip of wetlands. It's overgrown. I did not look in it, but it's down gradient. Maybe there's a drain line that runs down and then hangs to the right and goes to the pond there. But, you know, we won't know until we do some investigation. And I've recommended that the applicant and town cooperate here to try to see if we can't prove out that the intersection drainage has an outfall that we can depend on.
Okay. Did you want to respond to that?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
So as part of this project, we are, we did agree to widen Bailey Lane. Widen it to 20 feet. And that was, that was in conjunction with building these five homes. And our calculations show that by doing what we're doing, we are reducing the flow to that intersection. And I know Mr. Graham says that he agrees with our numbers, but doesn't necessarily agree. I think, I mean, if he were in my shoes, he'd be doing the same thing, using the same calculations and relying on the numbers, not feeling that it might be worse. I think our numbers show both volume and rate of runoff are reduced. And we're saying that if it was one pipe and it was going from this basin to that basin and we sit, and the question was, "Could you fix that pipe?", that would be a no-brainer. If it's, where is all of this drainage going and if it's broken, can you fix it? I think that's more than the applicant should be responsible for, especially given the fact that our calculations show that we're not increasing runoff to that spot. So I think it's unfair to the applicant to, number one, hold up the permit process to investigate an issue that is out there. I mean, these plans have been on the table and we're now at the five-yard line and we're gonna start digging up the road and going far afield to figure out where that drainage goes. I think it's unfair.
Would you be, would you be against working with the town to at least uncover existing conditions?
How far away? That's the question. The question is where does it end? Because if that drainage pipe is 500 feet and it goes through people's yards, the answer is no. We're not gonna be digging in people's yards. You just can't, we can't get that out.
Can I step in and address that? We've got a couple of issues here. First, the science, not Larry's feelings, dictate that we are not impacting that drain, period. You can't go on hunches. You can't go on maybes. The science, the engineering calculations dictate that we are not sending any more water to that intersection. You stated that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's end of story. Now, if you'd like us, when we are constructing the road, to do some investigation, to work with the town, we're happy to do that. But I don't think we can make it a condition for us to get an approval to go out and do all of that work. When we have equipment on site, we're happy to do that in cooperation with the town. But I think to hold this out as an exaction is inappropriate. I think you're way out of line.
Okay, well, I don't want, I don't want, yeah, I don't...
Well, it's here in writing. It's just, it's way out of line.
Well, so I think it, I think, I think it's clear. I think everybody understands that the calculations say you've reduced it. I think everybody's in agreement on that. Let's, we're not gonna resolve this clearly, this one, tonight. What I would like to do is, there's a bit of discussion that's gonna need to happen further about this. What I'd like to do is go on to the rest of the letter and the other items as well. Make sure we've got those all covered. And then I'm sure the planning board, we're gonna go to the members and I suspect the planning board members will have their own individual items to ask questions about, or they may not. But I'd like to do that and not get bogged down right now on this one potentially big issue. So with that, Larry, would that be fair then to say we move from B back to A now?
Sure, sure.
Okay, okay. So on one and two, one and two has to do with the public right of way and the applicant's, well, I'll read them. Number one, is the board and town comfortable with the public-accepted layout portion of Bailey Lane up to Mohawk Circle per applicant's legal counsel's opinion? And then two, which is the same ballpark, based on the applicant's legal counsel's opinion, is the board and town comfortable with the private portion of Bailey Lane south of Mohawk Circle? We had tried to, well, can you update us on the latest communication with our town council?
Yes. Today I was able to talk to Attorney Eichman about these two particular issues. I have a couple of questions to the applicant. The plans we're reviewing, do they, are they still labeling Bailey Lane as a public way?
Portions of it are public and portions of it are private.
Okay. Which portions of Bailey Lane are public that we're reviewing?
Up to the intersection with Mohawk, I believe, is the, I think it's to the pavement.
Thirty-three to 50 something, I think.
Into the pavement? I believe it's up, I believe it's up to here that it's public and then private beyond that.
I mean, in preparation for tonight's meeting and they can produce these plans, what the town has, Bailey Lane, it's public from 97 into the intersection of Taylor. And then from Taylor, Taylor is public. Clearly, on our official town map, Bailey Lane is private from Taylor up to Mohawk. And Mohawk is also private. So what Attorney Eichman wanted this planning board to realize, correct? What Attorney Eichman wanted this planning board to realize is that, you know, making... What Attorney Eichman wanted this planning board to realize is that, you know, making the private part of Bailey into a public roadway is sometime in the future, not what we're dealing with, with this plan. So, if it, if it is labeled public, it would have to take action of the planning board, board of selectmen and town meeting. So, what this planning board is actually doing, in accordance with the status of the present official town map, is dealing with a private way and the plan should be labeling Bailey Lane as a private way.
Okay. So, I don't, so I don't see, I don't see that as being really a holdup to this degree.
No, it's just the plan, the final, the final plan should be revised, preferably to private.
So, you wanna show a private from Taylor?
That's, that's the official status of that part.
That's, that's the official status on the map. Is there any chance that the map is wrong?
Only if, in, in, you know, this is happening with another plan we're dealing with this evening. That is a private way we're doing it later that was actually voted on as a private way for the entire way, which is different than the information we had at our previous meeting that we reviewed.
John, are you referring to the, to the annual town meeting of 2010, Article 28?
If you, if everybody, if everybody wants to look at the Heather Grove staff report, included in that is the listing of Tom Rhodes.
Right, where that shows Bailey Lane is private.
Correct.
Yeah, I have the wording from the annual town meeting minutes where Bailey was, was voted to be put on the official town map, shown in this capacity. And it basically said, the word private is, it should be shown on the official, said official map as a private way.
Okay. So, it seems pretty clear.
That seems to be the status at this point.
Seems pretty clear. It's an easy fix. It's not worth getting hung up on. There's nothing to really discuss.
The house numbered, number thirty-three to fifty-five is private. And that's not from Taylor. Thirty-three is where this lady lives. And it's right there.
It's right here. It's almost, that's thirty-three.
Yeah, but it's not up to Taylor.
Almost, there's Taylor.
Yeah. It's almost.
Can I just say, this, this really only, the only thing I see is this affecting is where we'd be concerned about what I believe is being called parcel C. Because as a private.
Can you point to parcel C?
Yeah, that little section. Because if, if it's a private road, naturally, we all know that the homeowners on either side own to the center line. And if the town were to accept parcel C, then that section at the very end.
I get another interesting.
Which is interesting.
Okay, so there's, there's more.
It could either be land given to the town for purposes of a way. It doesn't have to be accepted as a public way. The town could own it and there could be, there could be a private way on top of it, right? Not, not owned by the, by the public. And, or we could just.
Keep it?
Keep it and deed it to these lots and reserve it as.
Reserve an easement.
As a roadway.
So, so again, so again, I think we're, I think it's pretty obvious what it is. And there are fixes for it. It's pretty, pretty straightforward.
We can do it.
Yep. There was more, but there was more.
We can do it. That's what you asked.
It was a cartoon. And there was more of your conversation.
Yeah, the, the interesting part of parcel C, Attorney Eichman was strongly recommending that the planning board consider advancing the idea of parcel C actually becoming an easement dedicated for the future widening purposes of Bailey Lane.
Cut that. But, keep it as private. I like that.
Yeah. He also recognized that the right-of-way of Bailey, in all likelihood, at that point is located between the two walls that exist, not any wider than that. He recognized that to be the case in that building permits during the last hundred years probably, or 50 years, building permits were issued prior to that. You own the lot, do whatever you want. But, in any event, that particular lot still has frontage along Bailey Lane, which is a private way. And that's frontage that can count towards building purposes and be part of this OSRD, which this OSRD reflects the conceptual OSRD.
And so, he's, he's suggesting for the end of this to just apply an easement?
Yeah, for future widening purposes. And I would.
And utility access.
Yeah, I would say future widening purposes by the town or parties approved by the town for such purposes.
And utility, because there's a, there's a.
If you say roadway purposes, it includes.
For all purposes needed for roadway.
There's a hybrid there, isn't there?
Okay. So, that, okay.
We'll make sure we get the right language.
That was a good, it's great you hooked up with him.
Glad you brought it up.
Okay. So, then, that's, that's, those are items one and two. Larry's item has the fire department and highway department approve these final plans. The fire department has the highway department. Any update, official update on that?
His most recent update reflects Larry's concern. There's a catch basin out there that needs repair.
So, the highway hasn't signed off?
No, and Pete would be willing to work with the applicant. And rectify that intersection.
Highway, no. Fire, yes. Okay. And then, the last two, does the board want any signage on Bailey Lane for the trailhead to the open space? My recollection is the neighbors did not want to see that kind of signage. Two representative, representatives here tonight, but I think that was consistent. But, Harry, what?
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and I, I understand that the attitude that the neighbors may have. I'm not seeing anything blinking with, with lights or anything flashing. But, I think one of the things that we have to remember about this OSRD, we're waving a lot of things and we're, we're working together cooperatively to try to fix a lot of things, Bailey Lane, et cetera. But, the, the big eye on the prize is it's an open space residential design. We're preserving 60% of the open space. And in the end, and I didn't really see it on the plans. I probably missed it, Rich. Where is, to whom is the, is the land going, this open space? I didn't see it on the plan.
It's going to the HOA, but it has public access.
Homeowners Association.
Yeah, I mean, if the town wants it, we're happy to donate it. We could care less. We've not, we've not seen anybody that wants it. But, if you think that, if there's an organization in town that wants it, we're happy to deed it over. All it is a liability.
But.
So, this is a.
Yeah.
So, 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 so just going back though to the trail?
Yeah, just the trail, I would, I was thinking that perhaps this land would go with the Concom. Most, most of the OSRDs go to the Concom for the open space purposes, especially since it's natural heritage. And I, I don't know where the line is. I've, I've been looking for the line. It's probably near the natural heritage endangered species line that's supposed to be shown in the plans. Has to be shown in the very basics of the plans, but it's, I'm sure it's there. I just probably didn't see it.
So.
But, I know that usually goes to Concom and they usually have care and custody of it.
I would suggest the water department to this land. Because it's in the, it's close to the zone two, or it is in zone two.
I don't know.
Parts of it's in, yeah, and so, parts of it is.
It doesn't matter who gets it. No one, it can't be disturbed, so.
What I, what I wanna try to bring it back to though is this regards to the sign. And what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're thinking, Harry, that there should be some sort of signage that marks the trail because it's a trail for the public.
Yes, and, and just that it's a, it's going to be a public trail. I was thinking it would go to Concom. Excuse me, Concom's usually likes a modest, a trail sign, a sign just pointing out that it's Concom land, open space land. I think that would be a good idea. And, you know, it's probably not.
I'm fine. I think you're gonna tick off the neighbors. They're pretty adamant that they wanted no markings there.
So, if it's deeded to Concom though, they can subsequently put up a sign if they want to, right?
Actually, I was, I was, like, to the monumentations, but.
Great ringtone. I like that.
Monumentations?
No, the ringtone.
I mean, the signs, doesn't Concom have some sort of signage they use for marking trails?
They have a standard, standard thing.
I mean, they're, they're pretty small and they're fairly tasteful.
Sure.
They don't bang you over the head.
Yeah, I, I think the consensus is, you know, previously when there was a parking lot and, you know, signage was gonna be lighting and it was just kinda getting out of control. I mean, obviously, if it's for the town and it's for public use, you wanna have some, you know, you wanna let someone know if they're going there. That they belong, it's okay, they can use it. You just don't wanna billboard.
Okay.
Very much to my point for monumentation. One of the things from years, years of walking open space lands and looking at open space parcels, one of the things that can sometimes happen is, without any kind of monumentation, monuments showing where that easement or that entrance is, the boundary lines. One of the things that can happen is that the next-door neighbors have their lands infringed upon by the public not knowing where the entrance is. People are walking in their front yard, trying to figure out where the trail is. And the absolute reverse to that where I've seen the open space entrance get obscured. House and leftover.
So, 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 so I think in terms of monumentation and that, let's, that, that sort of addresses the signage issue.
Is there a specific text on the sign that we wanna have?
Well.
You have to consult with Concom.
Do we wanna call it trail access?
I, I think you'd probably wanna talk to the conservation commission if it's gonna end up going to the conservation commission. And, and, and letting, and letting them know that it's, you know, the neighbors understand that it's gonna be there, but it's not to be this giant sign or anything like that. So, whatever Concom wants is gonna be good for us.
Put the, the language in, have their approval though that applicant will, will work with Concom to ensure that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they're not holding anything up.
And do we know that Concom wants this land?
No, we, we don't. So, I, I think.
Some assumptions made here.
I think, well, I think what I wanna do is I wanna say to number four, does the board want any signage? I think what you're hearing is the board is gonna want signage.
No problem.
And, and, and it would be tasteful and small to market. The issue of Concom or not, we'll get to.
Okay.
This has to be one of the first projects I've seen in years that has gone through without concurrent Concom approval because there's no wetlands. I think it was the last parcel in Georgetown. It doesn't have wetlands.
So, and the last one was.
First for me in a long time.
So, the last one, has the board decided that there will be no streetlights on Bailey Lane or Bartlett Court? I, I raised the question of just the intersections and I didn't know. First, I'm just curious, the neighbors who are here, the abutters who are here, if there was lighting at the intersection of Bartlett and Bailey. One light for the intersection. Would that be something that you would find helpful, appealing, or would you prefer not? Cause there's no code on this issue.
There might be a big streetlight right near the Natalias anyways.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was tasteful, like a lantern style, something like that, I have no problem with it.
Can you point out to where the streetlights are, if any? I didn't.
Proposed?
Existing?
I don't know that I can, actually.
There's one at Mohawk and Bailey.
The pole shows.
There's one at Mohawk and Bailey.
That's quite, that's quite a distance.
Okay. And there's another one where?
It's pretty dark from that point down, but I think between 35 and 33, there might be another one.
Thirty-five and 33, Rich?
Where is the fire hydrant?
It's up, up, further towards Mohawk.
Is that where Bartlett is? Where the new court is going? Isn't there one that has to be removed?
The pole has been removed.
There's a pole that needs to be moved, yeah.
I think there might be a light here. But, I don't, I don't think that this pole has a light on it.
So.
I believe that the light department's gonna start replacing the town lights with LEDs as well.
We, if we're gonna move that light, we could move that pole, we could put a light on it.
All right, we, we're, we're going to need, I'm sidebarring right now, and this is really important. This board is going to need to get involved, one way or the other, with the light department in terms of how they're gonna light this town. So, I don't know where or how, John, we wanna address this with them. But, the LED is a world that is.
It's here.
It's got a, it's here and it's got, it's got a lot of work to go. It's, it's got a lot of problems. So, anyways, back to the board and number five.
The court, I think. Isn't there a pole down on the court between those houses?
No, it's gonna be underground. We have a pole here that needs to be relocated. So, we either could put a light on that when it gets relocated, a streetlight, or, because it's gonna be there, that pole will be there anyways.
Right.
Or, if, if people want it, we could put a lantern-style light near the entrance. And I think either one is.
Floyd's preference.
So.
If I was living across the street from that, I, I think I'd want the lantern.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I think that lantern would be an effect.
If I was living across the street from it, I wouldn't want anything there.
I completely understand.
So, I, 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 I think, I, I think from, you know, from, from a basic health, safety, welfare, and Rich, tell me what you guys think. You know, I, the idea of having a lantern-style light fixture at that intersection, but no lighting elsewhere, is not a bad way to go.
Any suggestions from Larry?
It's an intersection. It marks it.
So, now, which, which intersection, sorry?
Got some suggestions?
Of the court with the.
So, normally, we would put, we would, if we were doing lighting, we would, we would.
There's one already existing on Mohawk.
If, if we were doing lighting, we would do a light near an intersection. However, this is a little bit of a unique situation because there's only two, two homes on this, on this road. So, I think it could go either way. But, it, we have to run power down the street to a transformer. So, pulling, pulling a line off of that power onto a lantern pole is not, it's not a problem.
It's more money than the sign.
The sign is correct.
That is true. So, I, I guess on number five, has the board decided there will be no streetlights on Bailey Lane or Bartlett Court?
Can we ask Larry for opinion?
Yeah, no, I, I thought.
No, I think what you're talking about is fine. The only thing that I would say is not to leave out your thinking of Taylor and Bailey because that's a fairly busy intersection.
That's true.
Okay. Here's, here. If, the, boy, how do we deal with this one? The whole issue of lighting in the town. If we turn to Georgetown Electric to light this, they're going to, they're gonna blast the limb be jayses out of it. And there's another way to do it, yet we don't have any authority in this world of lighting the town. And I don't know what is the best way. We have already asked them to come to the board to talk to us and they rejected that. I don't know what is the best way to have, to enter into dialogue. We've already been told it's none of our business.
You want me to run for light commissioner? Then Matty will run the next year and then it'll be done.
I don't, I, I, and I'm serious about this. I don't, I, I don't wanna spend time talking about this when I wanna finish Bailey Lane. But, I, I guess, so how, how can we take this issue? Can we, can we just put this issue right now as a question mark? We may put lights, we may not. Okay?
Well, we wanna submit a final plan.
I know.
Well, if, if you.
You gotta be sick of us.
I don't, I really don't see.
Laissez-faire so.
A question could go to the light department about what they had suggested, putting a light on that pole that's already there. Right? Is that what you just said, Rich?
Can we, can we, can we agree on this? I mean, we're, we're adding five houses. So, we're not overburdening the intersection of Bailey and Taylor.
Agreed.
Okay? But, I think that the lantern suggestion at the intersection of the court and Bailey's a good one. And we're, we're comfortable doing that. Would that, would that work for the board?
It, it would, it would for me. And I, I think the issue of lighting, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but, but I think that's a town issue, the lighting.
And there's a pole there. If the town wants to put a light.
Already sold it. Don't buy it back.
Yeah, but the lantern.
We don't have, we don't have a way to light that because all of the power's overhead and it's on the poles already, so.
Well, I wanna add the lantern between those two houses now.
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
No, over here.
Over here.
Where's here?
I see a circle there that looks like it might be a little kind of a cul. I see a circle there that looks like it might be a little kind of a cul- uh, cul-de-sac.
No, the, the, these houses are gonna have their own individual light at the, at the front.
Oh, this driveway light.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's all we're planning to do. I don't think there's any need for another light.
I think that, you know, a nice lantern there will enhance the landscape.
So, so there'd be, so there'd be a, a lantern style fixture that would be there, um, and, you know, what's gonna happen?
We'll put it on the landscape plan.
I just wanna mention that, uh, this, uh, this gentleman has been here before, uh, and, uh, one of his concerns was the cars coming up this road and shining their lights directly into his house.
Mm.
And now we're proposing to put a, a, a lantern there that's going to be shining into his house.
Well, so here, here, here's the, here's the issue with the lighting. So this is where the fixture is everything and, um, ninety-nine percent of the LEDs that are out there right now, their cutoff stinks. And the fact of the matter is you look at those fixtures and if you look at them for longer than half a second, you're gonna cause damage to the eye. It's a fact.
Really?
It's a fact. And yet we've gotten used to them because the industry is just plowing ahead. There are a few fixtures that have done the best to date of shielding these LEDs. Um, I personally would stay away from the LEDs until the industry gets their act together. Uh, and, and some of the metal halides and some of the sodium vapors, there's, there are many more fixtures available where the guy in the house, he's not gonna see the light source. He's not gonna see the bulb and the fixture cutoff is more than ninety, it's, um, eighty-five. And so the, the point is there are fixtures, you've just gotta, you've, you've gotta find the right fixture.
What do you suggest? Do you know what it is?
I have an LED.
Up the top of my head.
I have an LED colonial.
I have to go back to my catalogs.
I, I have a colonial head LED.
Yeah.
That has good cutoff.
So if you, can you, can you, can you provide that to, when you say good cutoff, what do you, what do you mean?
I can, I can cut that, that backside off, like it can cut off the whole back, so it only goes towards the road.
Are you talking about house side shield?
Yes.
Okay, but what about the rest of it though? Cause the guy across the street, which is the point that Matt's making up, this is gonna need to be a fixture that is, the light's going down.
Well, the, those, those.
On any direction.
Those colonial fixtures don't, they don't go down because they don't go up.
Well, see, but they, they, this is where you get into lighting and all the different manufacturers and there are some lighting fixtures, um, I. And I, I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you which ones they are.
Comes down.
There are some fixtures where, um, it's, it's a cap and it's kind of like a, it's kind of like a lantern. And it, these are LEDs and they happen to be recessed just enough inside the cap that you, it's got a cutoff.
I think we're using them in a project in Concord.
I've seen them around.
Let's remember we put them on the lantern, but, I mean, let me do this.
So.
If we agree.
Commit to a light, but the conceptual issue is what we gotta solve.
I, I think we bring you some catalog cutouts.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Take your pick.
Need the, need the, um, need the, need the photometrics for those and the, those sheets. But I think everybody's in agreement that a lantern style pole that would shield that guy. And it wants to be that anyways. All the fixtures do it.
What we want is one of those loop-de-loops off the pole that shines straight down. I know what we want. I got it.
Well, you can do that. You can do a po- an arched pole mount, but there's also poles that just come straight up and they have this lantern style fixture.
Okay. All right, Rich, Rich is nodding. Got it. You can move on. I got it.
We need a light guy at the office, so.
Excellent. Geez, you guys are getting everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so that takes care of Larry's letter and now what I'd like to do is go to the board. And, um, Matt, only because I'm looking at you, start with you. If you have any issues, otherwise we'll just go right around and each person can put on their, all their items.
Except to say that I agree with them on this, uh, on this crushed pipe issue. Uh, this is something that they're coming to. Um, I, I can't see asking them to do something that's that far down, that, uh, so that's my only comment.
Okay. Larry?
Um, I just got a couple things and, um, uh, one of them, the first one's already been answered. Who is this going to? Is it going to the Concom? Have we talked to the Concom? You know, would, would they accept it and in what form and what condition? What kind of monumentation? What kind of signage would they want if they are gonna have care and custody of it? Um, um, my second thing was monumentation for the entrance there, just so that there's no private encroachment, there's no trespass on the private landowners.
What do you mean by monumentation, Larry? What do you, I know, I know the entrance, but what do you want?
Yeah, just, uh, they usually do the, uh, what are they there? Uh, four feet in, four feet down. It's like a pillar, granite.
Yeah.
Yeah, granite pillar, just so that.
Couldn't sell you on a cedar post, huh?
Yeah, no, it's for, for permanence, for, if, if.
Can't get the order if you don't have, so I figured I'd give it a shot.
I'd be a little disappointed.
What I, what I would, what I would, what I would be for is though not, not, not taking these granite posts and having them sit four feet up in the ground. You know, you can, you can get a smaller piece of granite that's buried so someone can't pull it and take it out, but it, you know, maybe it's only eighteen inches above the ground. Maybe it's twenty-four inches. It doesn't have to be four feet above the ground.
Where there has it.
There's more.
And I, I think the Concom is the one that we should talk to.
Let them, uh, well, I agree. That's up to the Concom.
If they want.
What are we talking, either side, either side of the, the entrance?
At the two, at the two, at the, the property line.
At the trailhead.
At the property line, it's the open space.
Okay.
You have, uh, one, one landowner.
So one here and one there.
Yeah, just those two points. Instead of, instead of the iron, iron rod.
Okay.
So those are gonna be back in the woods out of the way. I think, I think we can leave them out of the ground and, and not, not cause any trouble.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty-five years from now, fifty years from now, people are gonna say, oh, that's where it is.
Thank you, Harry.
No, I doubt that. All right. I doubt that. Um, the, on, on, you're showing page seven there, right? Well, we're discontinuing the old trail.
Yes.
Um, where the trail comes in from the existing Concom land.
Yes.
You're, um, you're putting a sign there, uh, says no, what does that sign say?
No admittance. In other words, so people don't, don't go into these.
Is there any chance you could bring that closer to the property line?
Up here?
That bu- yeah, that bound there. That should be where it is because that's where the property line is, right?
Well, it is, but there's no reason to go up this path, so we want this to go up.
But that's public land, right?
Can, can you?
Not yet.
If people walk up here, they're gonna, they're gonna want to keep going.
They're still on public land?
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna keep going.
How about a little fence or a planting along that trail?
That was really my question, just to interject, uh, just something to obscure the fact that there was a, uh, a trail there. Nowhere that you could put too little.
Big boulder.
Ooh.
Right in the middle.
Big boulder, uh, you know.
Tom, we can do that. We can do it.
There you go. Big boulder at the termination.
We're gonna find a big boulder. Up the sign, put a big boulder. We can do it.
Yeah, okay.
Drop a couple trees right on that.
All right.
Use the boulder to pound the bouncy.
Um, and if it is gonna be an open space transfer to the town, that, um, a condition would be that, uh, the open space title transfer concludes prior to the issuance of building permits for the individual lots.
That would be on the conditions.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can we, can we agree that that could be like after the, maybe the last two building permits? My, my only reasoning is, is it may take the town a while before they take the open space. My experience is those transfers, you're gonna go through the board of selectmen and everything else and I don't want our building permits held up because the town is.
Does that need to go to, that doesn't need to go to public hearing to accept that?
It does.
We go to a town meeting, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's usually a rubber stamp.
I know, but I definitely will miss the spring one with this, right? Or if we do, then basically they're waiting another year to get.
Well, the spring one, I don't see why not. It's like seven months away, seven, eight months.
But, okay, but let's say that we do, let's say that, that, that that happens and it's missed, then they gotta wait essentially another year before they can
Yeah, no, that's not right.
That's, that seems quite unreasonable to me.
So I, I think what I'm hearing though is that they need.
Beginning of Concom can accept with, with just a selectman.
If they can, then I have no problem, but.
Even that, yeah, but even then, it's not a, so, yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna, like, maybe my last two building permits for Bailey Court, uh, because those three building permits there, I can pull those to, I can pull those tomorrow. Existing street. You know, on Bailey Lane.
With frontage, yeah, with frontage, yeah.
So I don't want those held up.
That's where you're getting your money from. Yeah, I got you.
We honestly have no issue with it, Harry. If it's a condition of, of the approval, that should the town decide they want, want the land, we agree to donate it.
Prior to the issuance of the fourth building permit for the fourth lot.
So we'll, we'll, we'll word that when we get to that stage.
Okay.
Just want something, just so that.
We're not at that stage.
All right. That's it? Now, okay.
So I did have a couple questions. And one of them was if it were possible to, it just obscure that, but we got a boulder solution. We can do it. You're a bold man, all right.
Ooh, something that just triggered in my head. I'm sorry. Did I miss my opportunity?
No, uh.
I, I would, I would pass, pass it back as long as you return.
Yeah, a, a detail on the, um, the, the proposed trail that's coming in, as it comes in, it seems to edge around the, um, the proposed detention basin there, am I right?
Yeah.
Uh, and it goes over, what's going on? Hen's teeth there or, there, there's some crosshatch area there that it goes over, it goes directly over a crosshatch area? What is that?
Crushed stone.
That's crushed stone because it's got, the water's gonna come down? Is there any way to reroute that so that people don't try to go off of that trail? I, I notice when, when people walk the trail, if there's wet, they don't wanna get wet and they blaze another trail and I was just thinking.
Yeah, it won't be that. That's just an emergency. Um, it will be dry.
Spillway.
It will be dry.
Okay. I'm, I'm just thinking that people will make another trail in.
It's an emergency spillway, so if it's water coming down, people aren't walking the trails.
Okay, it's an overflow.
Yeah.
So, could, could you, could you just show me where the path is that Harry's talking about and the intersection of these concern? So it's right.
Right, he's just talking about right here.
And that's where it's a spillway that it's using as a, as a path?
Yeah.
Can, it, it, can it be, uh, can you?
It has to cross the path somewhere.
Has to cross the path somewhere.
The drainage is coming in this direction.
Okay.
So, um.
If you brought it on the other side, you'd be going back into the, that other neighbor's property.
If I brought it on this side, we'd have to push the, the, the pond that way. I mean, I don't wanna do that. It's, it's better this way and, and again, that is, um, once in, in, uh, I, I think, is that the hundred year?
How, it's, it's, it's gonna be contained.
It's a very rare event, so.
That's my point. If we have a hundred year storm and that thing's wet, nobody's walking the trail.
How big does this, how big?
We've been having a lot of them now. Every two years, it's a rare event.
Kind of like a crushed stone.
They're rare, but they're not hundred.
Two of them? Wow.
I wouldn't count on that.
Okay, um, so, um.
Yeah, I, I say, uh, a couple of questions about the, um, the drainage. It is counterintuitive to me that the addition of all of this paving and roofing, uh, would reduce the amount of water running down to Taylor. It's counterintuitive. So can you explain how it is?
I know your question. So, um, in the existing condition, a lot of this runoff up here goes down to that intersection. We are picking up runoff with new drainage and bringing it into our site and handling it here where it went down the street before. So we've reduced the watershed area to that, to that intersection by picking up drainage. And we picked up enough so that, so that although we are increasing the pavement, there's still a reduction in the amount of.
So that, that would, the additional drainage would be from the three houses, um, with the frontage outside of, of Bartlett Court? These, these three houses? That, that water runoff.
It's that, and we're also adding drainage where there isn't drainage here and pulling it.
And, and that area is gonna take basically the three houses plus the two houses and the rest of that.
Well, no, these houses, these houses are, um, they don't all go in this direction. Pieces of the house, pieces of these houses will give directions and we're picking up, um, some of this flow and bringing it here. So we, we get flow coming this way and we get flow coming that way and then, um, the flow that bypasses or beyond that basin is the part that's picked up and the part that's in previous drainage.
Okay. At the intersection of Bartlett and Bailey and from that point, how much out of a hundred percent of the existing water that's beginning from the first house, all five houses, how much of that water out of a hundred percent is going into those two, uh, stormwater treatment areas you have? How much is getting by and continuing out, just roughly?
Hundred percent is being picked up. I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, we're cut, we're, so we're, we're.
Picked up a hundred percent.
That's what I want Bob to understand.
The thing that, uh, maybe, maybe, this'll make it easier to.
This is our drainage guy.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we're just, we're just actually, we're gonna take the road and instead of having it come this way, we're gonna tilt it and we're gonna shit everything across the road and pick it up. And that is the hardest part to understand is how can we expand it and be adding pavement to other reduction, basically just because we're taking the whole top. And we're bringing it on.
So being redirected.
We're bringing it on to our site.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, you know, these two roofs here from lots four and five, those have some, those have some chambers that take some of the roof runoff, that puts that into the ground. Uh, we're, we're using this other one here where the path is, that's gonna take a lot of the runoff that normally would head to behind, um, thirty-five Bailey, that's gonna slow that down. We're using an existing depression that's here, um, behind, um, this lot, that's gonna slow that down, so everything will be contained.
To answer your question, we're, we're picking it all up here and, um, all of this is being handled off the road and then this is handled.
Just a little, just a little section.
I, I got it. Um, and, and I can see how you would really resist being, uh, having significant responsibility for what's going on in Taylor, uh, relative to the, uh, probably failed, um, system that's there. What I'm, I'm wondering, would you be willing to, you know, help in some manner, uh, some, like with, uh, Larry mentioned camera, uh, some kind of a drain camera? Help in research what needs to, to be done there. Not do it. Not do the engineering, not do the, the spade work. But just kinda help the, help the, the, the town figure out what to do over there. Can I answer that question?
Of course.
When we get to the end? I gotta see how many more asks there are.
I, I.
I think that's a rea- I, that's a reasonable request.
I get it.
It depends upon the totality of what we need to do.
Sure.
I got bounds, a sign, camera. I still got Mr. Hoover and. Tilly, yeah, I mean, you, you know, my concern is that that's a big problem for the town. I got it. I, I, I think you're adding value to the town in, in this work. I think it's a good thing. Yep. But. Not saying no yet. That's a, that's a problem for. I think that's a reasonable, depends upon.
It is, and, and, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
Oh, you're not.
There's, there's the question of how far it goes.
Of course.
And, and, um, that needs to be defined, how far we need to look.
Absolutely, absolutely. Bob?
That's it?
That's it, okay. Tilly?
Well, I'm, I'm also concerned with what Bob was explaining. Um, uh, I understand what you had, I understand how you were speaking to our consultant. But I know that Larry has done many, many subdivisions and we haven't had an issue as far as I'm familiar with. So his opinion is respected highly. Your numbers, if you wanna believe numbers all the time, that's your prerogative. But I would like to see, if you're not going to, to assist doing, uh, Taylor about the drainage, if you don't wanna do the light scoping, whatever you're calling that, then I would request a surety. That if you're so dead set that you're a hundred percent right, then you wouldn't have a problem with surety. And I would request that the board ask for that.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that retaining wall, can you do anything better for design than a cement retaining wall right at the entranceway there?
Jeff knows I like cast and place concrete. Or do that.
Soviet cell?
It's different.
Ever hear of, ever hear of Williams forms?
I think the best looking, the best looking product that you can, that you can do in a case like this, it's the most residential looking. Um, the other option is cast and placed, um.
These, these block tiller, you may have seen them, but you know, they, they, you can get where they have a pattern, a modular pattern where you have a block like that and then you have a block that's like this and you have another block that, and they go together in this mosaic pattern and they're split faced and they can be, um, colored. They have different colors that are weathered like gray or browns or whatever and and they can be, um, colored, they have different colors that are weathered, like gray or browns or whatever, and there's a whole range of manufacturers that do those blocks for residential kinds of use, and they're-
Is that like what East Main Street is?
I was talking about the, the recreational.
That's what you wanted.
Yeah.
At the entranceway, the Baptist, well, the community church, they put some kind of brick in.
I'm drawing a blank on that for some reason.
The, the, the fields.
Pressing the, the dump.
Yeah, yeah, I'm drawing a blank on that wall.
These, these are not gonna be big shea, big two by four blocks.
That's a modular block wall at the church going up.
Are they the small ones?
I think so.
Yeah. So, I'd have to take a look at it. I will say this, there's some good ones and not good ones. Um, do you not like the ones there?
No, I thought they were nice.
Okay.
But I don't know, for, for the, for buildings, it was fine, but for, for homes, I wouldn't have liked it, you know? Not in the rural area that you're being developed here.
It's gonna be a rural type, type block.
We'll bring some catalog cutouts for you. I think we're in agreement on that.
Okay.
Can I just jump in there? Their plans indicate that the design to be provided with building permit applications, so on your conditions, you might wanna-
We're gonna wanna see that.
Wanna revise that.
It is more than four feet. It's more than four feet tall?
No, I don't think so. A- as Rich said, it's, it's a couple of feet on, on one side.
Tilly?
I don't, I'd have to look at the, by the teach's plans.
I just wanted to clarify, those green squigglies that are going around the, the house lots, is that the, a buffer?
That's what we, we, you know, roughly the limit of clearing.
You're gonna clear it?
Existing trees remain. That's the edge of woods.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we've got, we've gotta build houses in septic, so, um, you know, we anticipate those being-
That's just my artistic license with a rendering pen.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to be, uh, the trail to be defined so that people aren't afraid to walk on private property. And they, and they have to know where those house lots end, so they're not incringing on their backyards.
Yeah, that's gonna be a trail in the woods and there'll be, there'll be a buffer of trees between the trail and,
Yeah, they're-
Between the trail and the, and the yards, so.
There're trails in town and, and I, I think people are generally quite respectful of staying on the trail when there's a house right there. I, I know I'm appreciative when I'm walking up West Street and Uptack Road, uh, up towards the power lines, um, that-
Well, I'm sure everybody around here would, just like yourself, you're a native, you live there, but for, for people that don't live there, you know, are not familiar with it, and there's many new people in town that wouldn't know, you know, what that meant.
You know, someday, there's gonna be an open space trail app, and people are gonna walk, and it's gonna GPS you to bad entries.
And you see the trail, you walk in the trail.
I'm just, I'm just not following, you're saying you'd like some outline on the trail, or what is it that, that you're-
I just wanted to be defined that where the, where the private lots are somehow.
Well, they, they, there, there's a lotting plan that shows where they are, and when they're done, each corner is gonna have an iron pipe, and they're gonna be separate from the-
No, I mean visually, visually, when people are walking around there.
I think it's easier to visually make the trail look like a trail.
The, the trail is just gonna look like a trail.
Yeah, I mean-
There's gonna be no reason to go off it unless you look at the trouble, I would think.
Yeah, and, um, they're not meadows, that's the guy's backyard, the house is right there.
And then, and then what-
Can't legislate stupid.
But there's a lot of different, you know, hopefully, the, the children will get more outside and, and adventure out, um. And then the last thing is the protection for the blading turtles. Have you guys did your national habitat filing?
Well, we, we, yes, but we can't, we can't get approved until we get a, uh, an approval from you guys. So, we take this approved plan, give it to them, and they issue the permit. They know, we've already given them this information, and they have indicated that they're gonna issue a permit, but we need to give them our final plan, and, um,
And you have a copy of that letter?
They issue the permit based on that.
You have a copy of the letter from Natural Heritage?
Where's the copy?
Sent to John this afternoon.
This afternoon?
Yep.
I was gonna say, I never saw it.
I didn't see it either.
The, the idea is, is that if we have to condition the final decision-
I know, but-
You can't.
But natural heritage issues their own permits. It's not, it's not for you guys to issue. We submit to them.
I also sent John a thing on-
They're regulated by them.
What I, what I hear, so what I hear you saying is that they have provided a letter attesting to what you just said, and that John may or may not have it, may or may not have gotten it, but you have that letter.
We, we have the letter, it's just, it's just the, the first step, or the second step to them, so we're comfortable that they're gonna issue a permit, but our, our final permit can't go in until we finalize this.
Two thirty-six.
Twenty-six. Must've been Pony Express because I haven't seen it yet.
Here's a sent email to you.
Well, I'll get downstairs and prove whether I'm wrong or right. Hey, um, one, one is-
Take that one.
That's what was emailed to you at two thirty there, 'cause we got your request, Tilly. That's a letter from Natural Heritage, and I sent it, I'm looking at it, I sent email today.
All right, so we have it now.
Yeah, I'll eat crow or whatever.
No worries, no worries. We have it now.
Not throwing you under the bus, I, I know, I, I-
We have it now, that's all.
It wouldn't be the first time. I have a question that was brought up by, um, Larry. This is, just a note that needs to be changed. With this wall, we're talking about the proposed modular block wall or approved equals, designed to be provided with building permit application?
No, we're, uh-
It's gonna be different.
We've already agreed.
We'll have a note on that.
Any other comments?
Um, no, I, I think that covers pretty much all of my concerns.
Alright, so, um, on, on your, um, on your sheet, one of two, where you have this note on the modular block wall, we're gonna wanna see that detail as part of the drawings and not part of the building permits. Um, and have that material spec so that we know it's residential and-
So, can we just talk about how that process is gonna go? Are we, can we submit it ahead of time and get comments without, can we back to?
I think what we do is we submit three or four catalog cutouts and, so that we're not going back and forth. How's that?
I, I hate to micromanage it that way. Um, I, I mean, and that's exactly what we're doing, but I mean, I, I think to a degree, you know, you're looking for residential flavored, Versalock is a great manufacturer, they have a whole number. Do you work with Versalock by chance?
Yeah, yeah, do it all the time.
So, they have, you know, if it came from Versalock and you picked one of their residential scaled, you know, block model, I'm not gonna second guess it, but, you know, textured face, earth colored,
Sure.
modular, so it looks like a wall, a stone wall versus blocks that are, is that pretty clear?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Rob, just so I, so I, I make sure that I understand, it sounded like Tilly wanted to see what was going to be approved, and you're saying you don't necessarily wanna see what's being approved.
No, I do wanna see what's gonna, but it's gonna be on the drawing, so we're telling them what it is, and they're gonna put it on the drawing.
Okay, and I think what they're saying is they don't wanna come in next, next time and then have us say, well, we don't quite like this particular one, come back another time with a different one, right? Is that what you're s-
Yeah.
Alright, so-
It's like to have some feedback. If you get the feedback that it looks okay, then we-
Well, do that if you want. I mean, I was trying to make it easier. I mean, I'm not gonna second guess the wall you submit after everything, we've just verbally communicated, but if you wanna submit some options for the, for the board, I just, you do enough to it.
But we'll give them all, and I think, I think we'll be-
However, whichever one you want to handle.
We wanna expedite. I think we take it off the plan in terms of, you know, the, the note, the way it's written. We bring in three or four different options, the board can discuss which they like, 'cause I guarantee you, one's gonna like brown, one's gonna like gray.
We're not gonna get into that crap. We're, we're not gonna speak debating colors. You, you can, you can pick, you can pick a color, and you guys should be able to stick with that color.
I like the pink mortar.
See?
I hope this board doesn't start saying-
An earth color. Okay, we'll do an earth color. You got it, we're done.
We can do it.
We can do it. We can do it, Mr. Chairman.
It's gonna be, it's gonna look like a cobblestone.
I wasn't trying to insert myself, it just sounded like we were saying two different things.
We were, we were.
I wanted to make sure that we-
Appreciate it, Matt. Appreciate it.
Um, so you have on that sheet four of nine, um, you have a proposed tree symbol. Um, you're gonna wanna either get rid of it or dovetail it with your landscape plan. So, we've, we've talked about the, 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 uh, buffer plantings between house thirty-three and house thirty-five on either side of Bartlett, and strongly recommend talking with the, with the abutters and seeing if they're open to planting on their property some trees and getting a s-, a full stagger, you know, really, so it's a woodland and not a fence. And then I, I, to the arborvitae question, I, I would look into the native, you know, trees, the evergreen trees. Um, I would, I would consider those, and they don't grow as fast as arborvitae, but if you put them in at ten, twelve feet high, they have an immediate effect, and then after they get settled, they're, you know, they're growing twelve inches in.
What's the lifespan of the arbor?
Pines, fir, you know, all of those guys, spruce, a- any of them, hemlock.
Most, most, most of those will be, in my opinion, sort of equally out of place, you know, because it's very deciduous.
It's mostly deciduous there?
So, I mean, we do have fir, white fir in there. What I was mostly concerned about were two things.
Yeah.
Was the, the light, uh, getting that light on, and specifically need more light.
Well, let me, let me-
The second was just a, one of the points, I'm sorry, but the other point was with, like, pines, um, we'll do okay at first, but five or ten years down the road, the canopy tends to raise, and you don't get the screening.
You need an understory.
Right, right.
So, I leave, I, if you can work it out with the abutters, and if you guys come to a handshake that the abutters are happy, I'm speaking only for myself, but I'm happy. And then also across the street thirty-eight, directly across the street, I don't know if you've talked with him or not about planting screening, 'cause I know he has been here and he talked about cars coming, going in and out and headlights. Um, so, to, to consider that. Public tree replacement. The, in the ordinance, there's a public tree replacement. It's section one sixty-five, sixty-nine, one point one, I've, I've mentioned it several times. And it has to do with when you take down big trees within the public right of way, you have to replace them, um, with a certain size, um, in a certain place, kind of thing. So, you're gonna need to address that. It would be really helpful if you show the trees that are coming out by putting an X through them, and so therefore the trees that you're saving. You know, some of those trees that are close to earthwork taking place, there's some things you can do to help save them and to indicate what you might be doing to help save those trees.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
I think we did do that.
You might have it all done on the plan.
Yeah, we did a separate plan for that, for the, the tree removal.
We have to widen the street because the fire department want it wider.
Yeah.
We have to remove trees as a result of widening the street for the fire department, and now you want us to replace the trees that the fire department wants us to take down.
Well, yes and no. I mean, yes, the fire department wants you to widen it, but it's part of developing the property.
Which is a special, it's special permit, doesn't it?
Not anymore. Not anymore. Special permit part's over.
Can you, can you explain why, I, I know you did once before, but it's been a long time, why, um, it's the grass crete at the intersection of Bartlett and Bailey Lane? Why, what would-
Because we wanted to be able to have an emergency vehicle take a right. We, we said, most people are gonna come this way.
Yeah.
And, um, we agreed to put that in so that if someone were to take that right and cut that corner, that they wouldn't destroy the-
So, why would an emergency vehicle wanna take a right versus going left? Why would they wanna go right out of Bartlett?
I don't know.
Was this a request that came from someone else?
From you guys.
Didn't come from us, didn't come from me?
Yes, there was a discussion we had.
Yeah, day twenty-fourth discussion.
To put a sloped curb so that people-
Yeah. It's slope, slope curve, and then, um, mountable, drivable, um, on that corner.
Interestingly enough, I wasn't gonna mention it, but now that you mention it, I, I think it conflicts with the landscape plan.
Well-
Tonight's the first time I saw the landscape plan. Think you have to drive through a tree now. Not sure. Just look that way real quick.
No.
I could be wrong.
He's good. The, the, if we're, we have to just put the, the lamp not there. If we're not gonna put the lamp, it's gonna have to be not going in that little line.
So, the way, the way these got, the way this got pieced together, try to refresh my memory, the, the, the curve of Bartlett into Bailey, that was, that happened first. Is that correct? And there was no, uh, grass crete allowing a turn? It was, that was the first design gesture? Is that right?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to say, Rob, but I think what it was is that that house-
We were trying to force the car to turn before it hit there, to keep the headlights off of that.
And it was also the guy's house. You wanted to have headlights turning, not go straight at you.
And then I think at a later point-
And then, you, you're saying that this board said drop it so an emergency can go the other way?
Yes.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, we did.
Because we were concerned about that house, Lucy and I were concerned with that.
But, but, but it does, it just doesn't make any sense.
Why don't we stake it out? We will, we can do it.
Time out, time out.
The comment was, if there was someone for an emergency vehicle going south, or it would be north on Bailey, turning left onto the, uh, onto that Bartlett Court.
I'm sorry, say again?
So, if someone's going down that Bailey and turning left onto Bartlett Court, that was the concern.
Coming from Mohawk.
Not leaving Bartlett going right, it was coming down the-
And, and do we, do we know that that's the direct, isn't it, isn't the fastest way?
That would be really rare.
For emergency purposes, think about-
Does he have to go up the dirt road and that Mohawk circle?
I think there was some, some, uh, comment about maybe they, you know, took, took the wrong turn or become the wrong-
They got, they went to-
That's just-
Well, if you drop a tree on the corner right at the intersection of, of, uh, Mohawk, is it Mohawk, or Taylor and Bailey,
Taylor and Bailey.
Then the only way you're gonna get to this is by driving Mohawk and taking that left.
Well, if you drop a tree across any road, that's what's gonna happen.
Right, but most roads have tees, and so it's not such a big deal.
Yeah, sometimes you can approach it.
But, but, but when you take reasonableness into account, you know, it would seem to me that ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you know, it just, what my concern is, is that grass crete doesn't work, doesn't hold up. If you're gonna be plowing it in the winter, you're gonna be picking them up with the plows.
No, it won't be plowed. It, it-
Well, it has to be plowed if it's for emergency.
Right, you're right.
So, you, you're gonna be, you're gonna be, it's gonna be a constant maintenance issue. You can't grow grass in those things. They, they, they show like you can in the photographs. In reality, it doesn't grow, it turns into a bunch of weeds and whatever. Um, they don't look very good, and it's your front door, it's your front entrance, and so, if, if, if the board feels you need to deal with the tree that falls down the road, why can't you just put sloped granite curb, put in a gravel base, put in a good section of loam on top of that for grass to grow?
So, this, I-
And then let a truck, let a, let a emergency vehicle drive over. The wheels will go through the loam, but they'll hit the gravel base, which will support the vehicle load. So, you don't have to worry about this grass crete.
That's what we're doing, Rich.
Um, well, hang on one second, just because, just because, I, I think this is grass paved.
Grass pavers, those are those rooms.
No. Grass pave is plastic cellular. It's, it's very, it's very, uh, there's very little area at the surface. So, it is basically, there are plastic cells that the dirt goes in.
Right.
But it's not, it's not those concrete blocks that you're thinking of.
No, no, I, I, I think, and I, I think I know the ones you're talking about. My experience, what's, have you had better luck with those than I have?
I, I've done one a few projects for emergency access, and it looks like a lawn.
Is it maintained like a lawn, though? I mean, is it someone who is taking care of it like a lawn, like it's a fire access, and so they, they fertilize it, they water it, they do all that stuff?
We're overcomplicating this. Let's just-
Walgreens, right?
Seriously, get rid of the things, let's do it with a jam and ass with the gravel base, the loam and the seed. It's nice and simple. That's a, that's a logical, common sense solution.
And it's gonna look better.
Right.
And you aren't gonna have to worry about maintenance except mowing it.
We can do it. We can do that.
The sloped granite doesn't throw the water off, does it?
Still a six inch barrier curb.
Is that what you're looking for in that direction there?
Get rid of the plastic, or else-
I don't know, I don't know how to flow it.
What are you doing?
On, uh, house, um, I don't know which one it is, number five, the, um, silt fence or the work limit line in the back of the house, uh, is, I'm looking at where you're disturbing grades and where you're disturbing work, and it looks like you've got the, I think it's a silt fence. You've got a silt fence making this big loop around. It looks like you can tighten up that work limit line and save trees, or am I missing something? It looks like your work limit line is a lot smaller than the-
Well, we're gonna be working out, he has to do the grades and, and-
Yeah. You, you can save almost half of what you're showing as open space for that house if you want.
No, but we need to provide the people with some, some yard.
Well, that's up to you.
No, we want to quit.
That's up to you.
Yeah.
Sign, no parking radius. The, uh, hammerhead at the end of Bailey Lane directly- Sign, no parking radius. The, uh, hammerhead at the end of Bailey Lane, directly opposite Mohawk Circle, the pavement comes into a ninety degree angle going up the private way to the end. It's a ninety degree versus a radius where the hammerhead, you've got radiuses on all three corners except one is a ninety degree pavement edge condition.
That's right. Because, because what we said was if someone needs to turn around, they could do that.
Yep. No, so I, I would-
There wouldn't be any turn in that direction.
I, I-
He's thinking of stacks.
I'm just, yeah, I'm thinking clearly of, think of what that's gonna look like in reality. You're gonna have, you're gonna have guys-
Yeah.
We'll just move that pole?
The other is pole there, that's why you're not there.
Just, just put, just put a small, just put a small, I mean, I have a hunch when they build it, they're gonna put a radius on it anyways, but just put a small radius up to the pole. It's just a detail. Um,
Okay.
We talked about the streetlights. Uh, planting details, we talked about that. That was- So, we've covered everything, I think, and-
We will do the camera.
I guess it's, uh, coming up with a date that works for you all.
Uh, there's a, there is a draft, um, agenda for our next meeting on the twenty-fifth. If you'll look at that and make a judgment. Rob, you have a copy of it?
I'm sorry, say again?
You have a copy of the draft.
Draft motions?
Uh, no, no, no. Um, there's a draft of the, uh, next planting wood meeting, um, underneath that pack, right there. If you, if you would look at that and-
Public hearings?
Best judgment, a lot, two of the projects were put off intentionally from the last meeting to make room for this one.
So, coming up, so we have next meeting date is, uh, ten twenty-five and you've got three. You've got Georgetown Plaza, you've got one A, one B, rear Spalding Road, and you've got one ninety-eight East Main Street. So that's pretty full. That's the twenty-fifth of October. So it would go to either November eighth, which would be the next meeting date.
Yeah, and that, that meeting right now only has the Affordable Housing Trust Plan.
So that would be a great meeting to get everything in, in time to wrap this up on.
Correct me if I'm wrong, um, and we're going to, um, do the cammering that, uh, Mr. Watts asked for, but we wanna limit it to the intersection. I don't wanna get going down Taylor Road. So we will, we will camera the intersection. Um, but if we address all of these issues within the next, how much time do we need to address all these? I think the only thing I saw time consuming was meeting with the two abutters. The rest of it's lipstick, right?
Yeah, the rest of it seems-
I mean, is it unreasonable to say if we get all this submitted next week, that we can't come in on the twenty-fifth and get this? And I'll tell you why.
I know.
Moving from the twenty-fifth to the eighth moves construct, is, puts us to the end of November before appeal periods and everything else have expired. I've lost, lost the season. If I can get out of here, the end of next, the end of this month, I can get Bailey Road improved for these folks now.
I'd-
It's your call.
Yeah.
I'll do either or.
I mean, next week I'm doing the staff reports for the, for the next meeting, so.
I, I, I think it, I think it just needs to end up being eleven eight.
Wasn't too many.
Yeah.
One late.
Okay.
I mean, we, look at, look at how late it is now. We've only done this one.
Nine o'clock.
So, um-
I get out of at midnight.
We have one more going on after this. So, uh, I guess what I'd be looking for would be a motion to continue this hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the OSRD for Bailey Lane to, uh, November eighth at seven oh nine, um, PM.
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to continue the, uh, public hearing for Bailey Lane to November eighth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. John, it probably has it in here. You, you have everything in here, but, um, Form H?
That was my next thing I was gonna say. Got my time to say it. Right now, we only have an extension up till, um, October thirty-first. Are you willing to extend it beyond that to accommodate the next?
Yes.
Planting wood meeting. Okay. Um, I'll send that out in the morning.
Yeah.
And, uh, John, is okay if we compare notes just to make sure we get everything on the laundry list?
I, I've been doing pretty well.
All right. My shorthand isn't what it used to be, so.
Couldn't, you wouldn't be able to read mine right now, but I'll, I'll clean it up.
When you mentioned that the fire department, you said season.
Yeah.
Was that the, the last plan? The very last one, not the first?
Nothing's changed relative to what the fire department wanted to see relative to Bartlett Court in their turnaround as they're proposing it. So, nothing has changed relative to needing their-
Call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yeah, so seeing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. It wasn't discussion.
Oh.
On, on the drainage points.
Yep.
You agreed to three, two, and the investigation only at the intersection.
Is that what I agree to?
I don't know.
Number three, number two, and just the intersection investigation.
Well, why are they saying this there then?
Just so I know.
This is on the September tenth, right?
Uh, yeah.
Three, two.
October, October ten. Section B, items two and three.
Two and three and, and investigation at only the intersection.
Who was there?
Can Larry do an estimate on the surety?
There's no surety.
There's no surety.
I'm the first.
I'm the bad one.
You're the bad one.
So you're gonna do the, I'm a little confused. Can I clear that up? Is he doing?
Huh? I think we did.
Rob, before they take off.
Um, there was no surety that was just, that was agreed to by the board.
So that means that they're gonna do it, they're gonna do the intersection with the light.
Which intersection with the light?
T L and three intersection.
Can we just continue this?
Yeah, we are, we're in continuance right now, Mr. Chairman.
We'll cut, we'll get, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I'll make a motion to, um, open the continuation of the one and two Heather Lane, Heather Road, uh, definitive subdivision hearing.
Second.
You have to open the hearing, right? And then close the hearing?
Yeah, well, they're asking for withdrawal of the definitive.
So, so motion, uh, motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the, uh, public hearing, uh, for one, two Heather Lane, um, A and R. Any discussion?
Not A and R.
Definitive subdivision. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, uh, make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the, um, with the, um, definitive subdivision, um, approval for Heather, one, two Heather Road.
Second.
Harry, just give me one second.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, was there a second?
Yes.
Uh, motion, uh, was made and seconded to allow the applicant to withdraw without further consideration. One, two Heather Road definitive subdivision plan application without prejudice. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
Motion to close the one, two Heather Road definitive subdivision hearing.
Second?
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to close the one to two Heather Road definitive subdivision plan application. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept the application for the A and R, application for one, two Heather Road, plan of land Georgetown, Mass.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to accept the application for one, uh, and two Heather Road A and R plan. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. John, and then you guys.
Motion to relieve.
Motion. So allow Larry to go home?
Larry, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, John, an update, sir.
Uh, yes, as, as you can see, it is a different application that we're dealing with this evening. It's an A and R. Um, this is taking into consideration the research that was done by the applicant, uh, leading up to tonight's meeting. Two thousand seven Heather Road was, um, approved as a private way. It does, uh, show on the official map as that, private way, and that's in accordance with town meeting action in two thousand seven. So, uh, we were dealing with the definitive plan, now we're dealing with an A and R. And this plan consists of creating two distinct, separate lots, uh, each having existing houses. Um, previously, or as it exists now, there are two houses on technically one lot, and they'd like to separate that.
For the record, my name's Bob Gressel for the Engineering Land Services. Uh, this is Heather Road, uh, which is, as John had stated, was at a town meeting, two-thirds vote, uh, to be accepted as a private driveway. Right now, there's, uh, a lot, uh, for Lynn Kramer for number one Heather Road, which is shown right here. Uh, the area is six point six, seven acres. Uh, there's an existing dwelling, existing driveway with, uh, existing water service, town water service. Uh, the total frontage for the lot is four hundred sixteen and sixty-five feet. Uh, so we need the frontage requirement and the area requirement for zone, uh, R eight. The other lot would be seventy-four B, which would be to Heather Road. It's an existing dwelling, uh, with its own septic system, provided with town water. And that final lot area would be, uh, thirty-seven, uh, six, uh, six hundred and thirty square feet, which is oh point six acres and a total furniture of three hundred and thirty-one point six, seven fifty. Uh, so it meets the A and R requirements for the furniture area. And the access, uh, would be off of Heather Road, which was, like I said before, um, approved, uh, at two thousand seven and put on the town official map, uh, as a private way. Uh, we're also proposing on lot seventy-four B, a post utility easement of five hundred, uh, twelve square feet, uh, because there's an existing hydrant, a water meter pit and a street sign. It, Martin Arsonoff, the attorney, has drafted up a, an easement deed, uh, to give to the town. Any further questions?
John, do you wanna, anything in particular?
No, I agree with what they've-
You're all set?
Yeah.
Is there anyone from the public that, uh, wanted to speak on, on the project? No? Um, just going around the board? Matt? Harry?
One thing, um, I'm seeing, um, we're calling it, uh, one of these lot seventy-four A. Calling the smaller one lot seventy-four B. Um, is the roadway itself lot seventy-four now?
Uh, no, that's, that's part of Heather Road. Heather Road was exist, was, um, was layered upon from Monroe Street to the, uh, with, with, and that rock pond. The whole road. I just defined it as, uh, the, the lot area that road.
Okay.
Well, there was no definition in that area for the right of way. Uh, so I kept it as a two road road, which is up the street. And I fit with all the utilities, all within, uh, the grade.
Um, my only concern is the assessor. Uh, usually when, uh, a lot seventy-four gets divided, it becomes lot seventy-four and the other one's seventy-four A. And that's the only thing where we're labeling them. We're not saying parcel one and parcel two. We're actually giving it a designation and I'm just hoping that the assessor agrees with that because now there's no more lot seventy-four.
I think, I think he, didn't you say the last time that the, the original house, the older house?
This one.
The address is on Monroe Street?
Yes, he's thirty-four Monroe.
So why, the assessor wouldn't change that, I don't think. Would they?
I, I only know as far as the map and lot numbers are concerned. Uh, where the lots, when, when you have divisions of lots, you, the, the, the methodology that I've seen up till now is that one of the parcels retains the original number and then the other parcels that are derived off of it, whether it's subdivision or an A and R, become A, B, C.
I don't, I, I don't like that method because, um-
But it, let me ask you, how, how does, so how, can, if we approve this, um, does, does the assessor get a crack at it? In terms of evaluating?
Uh, the plan could be amended in accordance with board action tonight to-
Contingent upon?
Contingent upon.
Sign off by, what is it?
No, not sign off by him, but just going over with the assessor how he wants it properly.
That, that's what-
Can we swing this by his desk at some point?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll make a motion to continue, but we can't continue.
I, I'm thinking that already has a separate lot designation in addition to the address.
Yeah, I, I like to, to name lots, A, if they, if they get changed from, uh, so, so you know that it's been changed. Uh, seventy-four A and seventy-four B, um-
Because seventy-four no longer exists?
Exactly. This was seventy-four. Uh, so when we, when they created the right of way, I wanted to make a distinction that there's two lots, seventy-four A and seventy-four B. Um, that's the only reason I, I like to do it because I know there's gonna change.
And that, I mean, that makes sense. It makes sense, but I just wanna let the, I wanna let the assessor-
Yeah, they have the final say on that, so, on the R.
So we, we can move on from that one.
So, if I could just chime in for a moment, Martin Arsonoff, they represent Lynn Kramer, the owner of the property. Um, when we deed the property, when we deed lot seventy-four B out, the deed will read lot seventy-four B as shown on this plan of land, being a portion of the whole, the total lot, right? So the description of her land is derivative from the plan at that point, right? And a plan description is an adequate description of property for conveyancing purposes. So I don't think it's gonna confuse the assessor.
We'll let them tell us. We'll just let them tell us.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay. Um, anything else?
I don't see the, the, the assessor being confused at all of this. I just see potential conflict enough.
Just my personal.
Whatever the assessor wants is-
John, the only question I have is, um, and, and to the board also, on the easement addition and the legal, do we, do we want someone to-
Yeah.
Take a look at that legal wording?
Yeah, preferably, uh, read it by town council.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So there would be two, it would be approval, um, contingent upon that and contingent upon, uh, the, um, assessor agreeing to the numbers. So with that, if, um, get a motion? With those two contingents, if I could get a motion?
For what, Mr. Chairman?
I'm just accepting and, and, uh, we're not approving.
I was gonna ask, uh, tonight is, tonight is the eleventh.
Yeah.
And so the clock begins ticking tonight because we accepted it tonight. Um, so we have twenty-one days and when's that next meeting?
Eight.
No, well, the next, the actual next meeting is the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-two weeks.
So fourteen days, that's twenty and a half. We own this. Twenty-one days.
Yeah.
Click, click, tick tock, tick tock.
But can't, can't we approve a contingent upon?
No, it's not a good way of doing things, I'll tell ya. Contingent upon.
Well, what-
Contingent upon assessor's map number in a-
Contingent upon assessor's map number being-
In a, in a legal deed.
Note from the assessor saying we're fine with these numbers or we want them changed and you would then change them.
I would change it.
And, um, the town council-
And it would have to come back to us that night.
Just to sign the-
I, I have a question for you, uh, Harry, is-
Wait, 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 before, oh wait, I wanna finish this. So, and the town council would review-
The easement.
The easement? I guess I'm still not clear. Help me understand, why can't we do this contingent upon those two simple issues? And be, and be done with it?
A contingent on anything is, is not, uh, finalizing our decision. So, if, you know, it's not legal, really. Uh, you could, you could explain that better than I can. So, i- if, you know, it's not legal, really, uh, you could do, you could explain that better than I can.
So, so, you're not acting on this plan, you're only endorsing it that you don't have to act on the plan, because it doesn't present a subdivision of property for purposes of the subdivision control law, so I understand where, where Ms. Evangelist is coming from in making her comments.
Yeah.
I suppose that the applicant could voluntarily agree to do those things. Um, you know, and, and certainly granting the utility easement was a courtesy to the town to try and clear up what we saw as a title issue, because the town, uh, placed improvements on private property that, that shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
So, you know, and there'd be an issue of whether or not they could enter that land to maintain those improvements that they placed on the property, so we're trying to do that as a courtesy.
Well, and it's accepted as a courtesy, and we're not reviewing it because we're concerned about that.
I don't think it's really part of, I don't think it's really part of the Form A plan. We're just trying to do it as a courtesy to the town, now if the town wants to have that reviewed by town council before they accept our wording, that's fine, but I don't think it's technically part of our application, the grant of the easement. Uh, our, our, our application is for you to review this plan and determine whether or not it's a subdivision of property for purposes of the subdivision control law.
However, we're using that as your frontage.
Okay.
Heather Road, we're using that as your frontage for the.
But that's not having anything to do with the easement, though.
Right.
No, but frontage has to do with the A and R.
Correct.
And so, uh, my question was, you're, you mentioned the easement was only for the water line, the easement is not for, uh, access on that area.
The easement, as I wrote it up, I believe, can, contains language that says to allow them to enter the property, right? Uh, for purposes of maintaining whatever improvements are there, that's the nature of an easement like this. I mean, if town council wants us to change the language, we're certainly open to that, I don't think that's an issue.
To protect the, protect.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean.
Accessing it.
But, but my point is, I don't think that's part of this application, we're just submitting it as a courtesy to.
Certainly not under a timeline for that.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I just.
All right.
I think we should just approve this and then ask them if they would please go to the assessor, and if there's a, a, any problems to come back, but I think, I think the A and R as, as submitted is acceptable, right, John?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we're really just talking about a numbering issue, I, that to me, I'm sorry, is not.
I'm trying to get, I, I agree, I'd like to, I'd like to try to approve it and, and have an agreement then that you run it by the assessor.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to move that we, uh.
Endorse.
Endorse this plan, uh, and encourage the applicants to, uh, connect with the assessor and make sure the numbering is, I mean, approved.
Essentially, you're asking, you're, you're saying to endorse this plan or any, or this plan with any corrections by the assessor?
Sure.
I'll second that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, I'll second.
So, it's been, uh, moved and seconded to endorse the Form A for one, two Heather Road as submitted, map six C, lot seventy-four, or as lot numbers amended by the assessor's office. Any discussion? Could've been worded better, but any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John, you had, um, you have Form K in here. Which I signed in September, do we need the planning board to sign this now?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
So, can I, so you draw a hand talk on that? And that was the only other thing you had in the red book. As that's going around.
Did you wanna look at the my, okay.
Harry, uh, I have a question, I think you're fixing your papers there, Ron. I've looked at the A and R a couple of times, the state law, and I don't see anything in there that says that we can't have a continuation. So, I'm asking you, where did you get that from, so I can look at it?
You're not opening a hearing. There's no hearing to continue. He's got. What are you continuing?
It's a meeting.
A meeting, business that just goes from one meeting to the next meeting? A hearing, a public hearing has to be open? Uh, this is just my interpretation, Tony, but a public hearing has to be open, and every time you do it, you then have to either close it or continue it.
Yeah, well. I'm gonna tell one, just on a, one minute recess, if you're.
Well, I think we're close to being done.
Oh, we're done?
I, I think so.
There's a lot of cross talk.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
John, there's really nothing else on the agenda, correct?
Correct, yeah, and I just need this into us, this is the.
Can we motion to adjourn and we'll then sign it?
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, a second?
All right, let's do that, and then we'll sign that guy and get out of here.
Wasn't perfect, it's good enough.
Oh, one, one more thing?
Uh.
Is it done? Are we done? Yeah, uh, motion to, uh, uh, motion for, uh, two hours of LTA time for, uh, uh, corrections of the, uh, the, the my map. John can fill us in on the detail. No, that's just two hour, no, that's for my map, no, you're thinking of the other one.
So, uh, so moved, you have a second? Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, I don't think John got it.
We'll tell him.
We'll tell him.
What, give it to me again?
Uh, motion for two hours. Of.
Two hours.
Local technical assistance time. With Merrimack Valley Planning and MV. For my map.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can the chairman just sign?
Um, I think we are.